Good evening, wow, good evening, everyone. The time is 6:31 on Tuesday, June 6th, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up is our consent agenda and the minutes from May 23rd. Any questions or comments on the minutes?
Just a comment. And one of the motions made under new business, under B, the school choice open slots. I don't think Mr. Durham motioned and seconded his own motion.
No, I didn't.
So, did you make, do you feel like you made a motion? Or was it George?
I think I made the motion and George seconded.
And George seconded, okay.
So, just a correction there.
Alright, so, let me pull that up and we'll let Jackie know. Good catch. I would not have, um, would not have caught that. My computer's being slow, I apologize.
It's right under the graph.
Okay.
You'll see it when you scroll through the minutes. Everything's kind of slowing down here. Nope, that's not the one I want. I want the ones from the 23rd. Sorry, my brain is apparently stuck in neutral. It's June, and it's not May 9th, June 6th. There we go. Okay, so we need to adjust. Who seconded?
Any other questions or comments on the minutes? If not, I'll take a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Next is the warrants 72 and 74, which will, I'm sure, arrive when Todd gets here to sign. Any questions or comments on either of those?
I can't seem to open either of them again. It's doing that same.
Oh, I could open them earlier from my phone, but I cannot open them. Oh, I can only open 74 on my computer.
I got both.
Were you able to get in with?
We're still good, shared drive.
School primary.
Primary folder.
Hmm.
And then under the, the state.
Mine didn't even give me that error.
Learning all the folders.
72, it just comes up blank. It's like it's stuck. Maybe it's just not, maybe it's.
No, there's some blank pages in between.
So, that might be David issue. Alright, regardless, have you seen them then? Or no, you can't open them?
I haven't been able to open them.
Should we delay the vote until, we'll do that and wait until Todd gets here? So, just remind me before we adjourn to come back to that, please. Next is disposal of dysfunctional technology.
This is a vote I ask for annually, usually before the summer. We have equipment that is no longer functional or obsolete that I'm asking to dispose of. We have a company that takes it. They break it down, recycle the materials. If there's any value to the equipment, they give us something for the value. Last year, we had some stuff that we disposed of and they gave us like a seven or eight hundred dollar credit. There was some small value left to it. So, this equipment will consist of two types. There's a bunch of old equipment that we used for quite some years that was donated to us. It wasn't purchased, it was donated to us. We've got good use out of it, but it's dysfunctional, obsolete. And then there's some Chromebooks that were purchased some years back for the high school, which are dysfunctional. Some cases, the batteries inside are leaking. I shouldn't say leaking, but swelling, stuff like that. So, it's not worth repairing those devices. So, those are, in summary, that's what I'm planning on getting rid of. And what I was gonna do was, I was gonna do it in separate, I was gonna separate, you know, have the company come like two or three times over the course of the next few months. It'd be easier to keep control of it and monitor it that way.
Excellent.
So, that's what I'm requesting.
Any questions?
With the Chromebooks too. I would assume that some of it with the batteries and things like that and some of it as equipment becomes obsolete, it's because it's not able to kind of send and receive the same type of updates and information that we need it to?
Yeah, in this particular, that was the case last year. The stuff that we got rid of last year, Hewlett Packard G5s. They had, they have, Google has what they call auto expiration and those expired in June of 2022. So, those would not have been usable by the school for their current school year. So, last year, there was a lot of that. The devices we're getting, the devices, the Chromebooks that I'm getting rid, disposing of this year, the problem is, is that they're way beyond their warranty period. But there is still Google auto updates, but that's really not valid because the device is failing. The motherboards are failing, the batteries have swollen, or the power supplies are failing, all of which are expensive to replace. So, those are, that particular model is one generation newer than the ones I just referenced that we got rid of last year. So, yeah, it would've been nice to be able to get another year out of them, but we can't. I actually met with two representatives, you know, online meeting, Hewlett Packard, very nice people that, you know, were, listened to my concerns and, you know, other than saying, you know, "We'll help you possibly get some discounted parts or something", you know, that's the way it is. We're not gonna, we're not gonna fix them for free or replace them for free. So, it's welded on warranty. It's almost like the car you have that's welded on a warranty period. You're hoping to get another year out of it, but it needs so much maintenance right now, it's not worth fixing to get rid of it.
Thank you. If there aren't any other questions, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the disposal of the dysfunctional technology.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is visitor's comment. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting. I don't believe we have any. Surprise. Alright, Faith, welcome.
Thank you, so excited, first time.
Oh, grab one of those.
I got two. Now, we're getting real professional. Where is it more?
Hello, hello?
Yeah.
Okay, so for the East Meadow section of my report, the sixth grade graduation is this Thursday at 1:00 P.M. And the step up for preschool is next Friday. Last Friday was touch a truck day, so a bunch of kids got to go outside in the little back fields and they got to touch a bunch of trucks, fire trucks, police cars, ambulances. My sister was there, so she told me all about it. And then seniors are coming through this Friday through East Meadow. And May 31st, they had the Hitchcock Center come in to all three pre-K classes and they did bird workshops and they learned about birds and they made their own nests. And it was just so much fun. Miss Aishal was telling me a lot about it. And the third grade went to Starro Town on a field trip today. It was like a look back into pioneer life and that was their kind of end of year trip. And they had a lot of fun. Then the fifth grade is going to Springfield College to do a team building ropes course as their end of year field trip. So, I'm excited to hear about that. And the sixth grade went over on Monday for an ice cream social with middle schoolers at the high school. And speaking of the high school, nice little transition there.
We noticed very nicely done.
The junior high luau was this past Friday and they had a great turnout, just like every year. And this Friday also was like, also was the third IXL Benchmark Assessment closing and the data will be added to the data dashboard. This week started off with our junior high awards ceremony as well as the eighth grade step up celebration. This week is senior week and this week is filled with fun activities ending with the graduation on Saturday, June 10th at 10:00 A.M. in the high school gym. Finals begin next Monday, beginning with A Block. And Tuesday through Thursday will be half days. Then Friday, there will be a session for any students that miss their exams as well as a half day for ridiculously fun activities organized by Lisa Smigle. And the science impress for grade nine is underway, happening today and tomorrow. And the senior shirt orders for the class of 2024 just closed last Friday, June 2nd. Today was the official announcement of all class officers for the next year. And a little update on Project 351. The clothing drive was a success and the Project 351 reunion is this Saturday at Chillicothe Stadium.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Are you going to that though?
I sadly cannot make it because I'm going to the graduation, the grad parties afterwards. And, but Brenna will be going and she'll give me a little report afterwards, so.
Excellent.
Yep.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Faith?
No, thank you.
Question in general, is graduation in the gym?
Yes.
Okay.
They felt, the seniors felt strongly. They wanted to bring it back and kind of return to their tradition. They didn't want to have it in the parking lot because it can be quite hot. And so, they, there was a lot of discussion about having it at some alternate locations on the property, but then they decided, you know what? Let's just go back to what's always worked. And so, that's what they're doing.
Awesome.
I think it'll be.
I love it.
It'll be nice.
I'm sure it'll be nice. I mean, how can it not be, right? Graduation. Excellent, thanks so much, Faith.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to make a minor modification to the agenda. Both Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Dorman are at senior banquet as invited guests and they should be here in a little while. So, what I'd like to do is adjourn to our work groups. We have, we have three listed. However, Mr. Balki has been, is on deployment. So, policy subcommittee, unless Stephanie, you and Jill want to talk about anything for that, but we have budget and finance, which is myself and Mike, and then community relations, which is Stephanie and Mike. So, I'm not really sure how we should figure that out.
I don't feel like there's anything in it for the community relations right now, given like it's the end of the year.
Alright.
But, that's just.
Okay, so, we'll adjourn to work groups. We'll do about until 7:15 or so, like a half hour or so. If we feel like we need more time, at that point, we can reconnect and then we'll be back on.
Perfect.
Alright, so we're back. Policy subcommittee with George on deployment. Jill did some of the work that she needed, so she can give us an update.
Yeah, so I sent just the updated potential final version for consideration. It was based off the conversation from our last meeting. I didn't have any additional, you know, feedback or questions in the interim. And so, kind of left the language the same, took out the comment that was in there about like other information should be included in this policy because that was just to note. And then kept the last statement that we had about the superintendent being responsible for blah, 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 and then noting that it would be in the student handbook.
Excellent. So, we'll have this on our agenda? Oh, no, it's on, it's further in in our agenda to vote it in, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. For budget and finance, Mike and I just had, kind of had an overview of what to expect for the committee going forward. And then for community relations.
And then same thing, just kind of an overview of the work we've done thus far and our goals moving forward. Just talking about different ideas. Mike had some great ideas that we'll chat about next time and just keep going along.
Alright, so now we're gonna circle back to our consent agenda and do item B, vote on warrant 72 and 74. We've all seen them and signed them now. If there aren't any additional questions, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant 72 and 74.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're at continuing business and.
Oh, you already did that.
Yeah, so what happened was we couldn't.
Because of the warrant.
The warrants. So, we've done minutes, the technology, visitor's comments, Faith was here, and work groups. So, now we're to continuing business. First up is enrollment dashboard and then we'll get into.
And as you may imagine, there was not a whole lot of movement in the month of May. We are down one student, kindergarten, kindergarten student moved out of state.
Okay. And then.
That was referenced in the school choice conversation last month but wasn't reflected on the document until now.
And then if there's no other questions on the dashboard, we can go along to the school choice. Where are we with that? Have we been receiving more applications?
We've received a couple more applications, but right now, we're really looking at the, getting letters out for people accepted and the lottery, which would take place the week of the 20th. So, by the end of that week, families should be receiving letters from us about acceptance or if they're on a waiting list in the number based on lottery.
Do we advertise for school choice at all? Like, do any sort of like flyer? I know I've talked to the alley about this in the past. I've seen other districts who've kind of hemmed and hawed about at some point doing something similar out on social or anything like that.
We have had that in the, in the past. We've had the flyer for the junior, senior high school. Interestingly, we haven't posted the flyer, sent the flyer out this year, but we have as many school choice applicants in seven through 12 as we do in the, obviously, first grade is out of here with I think 10 applicants still. But, we're about, half of our applicants are in the seven through 12.
That's great.
Yeah.
Any other questions on school choice or the dashboard? Have you been able to look around on the dashboard?
I have, I've been poking around a little bit.
Excellent. Excuse me. Alright, next up is our field trip policies, IJOA, JGH, and JGH-R. And as we just talked about, coming out of the work groups, Jill has sent us the final IJOA. If you all want to just take a minute and look it over one final time before we vote, that would be great. Excuse me. Just add a comma after distribution before and.
You don't have to.
Why?
It's preferred. It looks good. It's the Oxford comma.
Alright, if there's no further questions, I'll take the first motion for IJOA. I'll make a motion to approve IJOA. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is JGH. Can I have a motion?
Make the, make the motion to approve policy JGH.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then JGH-R.
Make a motion to approve JHR?
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good job taking turns.
Okay, next is our school committee calendar. You keep doing, I'm gonna pull up my calendar. I keep closing stuff out today. It's like I'm deft on a blind or something. I see, okay. Okay. Alright, I. Just pull up the school calendar too, just to see if we have any. I will not be here on July 18th. Someone will have to be here.
Neither will I.
Okay, so we won't have quorum because I don't know that George is back. So, we have to find a different date for July. 11th?
I'm at a conference.
It doesn't have to be a Tuesday also. It could be a different day of the week in the summer, maybe? I don't know. What about Wednesday, the 19th?
I'm gone the 18th through the 27th.
You are too, July.
I'm gone the whole week. The 12th?
What about Thursday, the 13th?
I don't think I'll be able to make it back in time. I'll be in South, Southern Connecticut for work.
What about Monday, July 10th?
Yeah, good.
I'm leaving that afternoon for the conference.
Okay. This is the problem with.
I don't know that what, like that first week in August looks like for people, but another thing that I mentioned last time is if we wanted to try to get a couple of subcommittee meetings in, in July and then move the first August meeting up to August first week. I don't know that that works for people, but that might provide us a little bit of flexibility. It would actually be August 1st, it looks like, if we stuck to the Tuesday.
I'll be away, but as long as we have quorum, I think it.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
I will not.
That's three plus.
Well, we don't know if George, I don't know when George comes back.
Oh, gotcha.
I think he said he wasn't back until the end of August. I could be seeing out of turn, but I'd rather not. We need to at least have three of us here to count it and if we get George as a bonus, but.
Could we do the 31st of July?
Because the Monday, you're, but if I'm definitely here, we would at least have quorum if Jill and Mike can make it.
Or the other one is, what about Thursday, the 6th?
Yeah, I can be here for that.
Of July?
And we, I mean, if it's easier with summer, do you, we could.
I'm away that week.
Let's go back to the.
I thought you meant July, I thought you were saying July 31st.
Yeah, I'm not here. So, July, if July 31st is what you, so we'll have July 31st and then not, and then August 15th and August 29th.
And I mean, there's gonna be a certain, at least, I don't have a 29th already.
August 15th and what was the second day?
August 29th.
29th, okay.
There's a, in the folder for today's meeting, there's a document called school committee dates, which is what we're reading to go off of.
They're in the blue.
July 31st, I'm on a different document, just kind of updating it as we go.
So, we're saying. Are we doing the same time, 6:30 for all of these meetings, yeah?
That's good.
July 31st. And then are we keeping August 15th and 29th?
Well, we were, we were talking the 29th as the first day of school?
Second.
Second day, okay.
Either way.
Alright.
I think those are good placeholders.
Yep. And then September 5th. So, we'll have the 29th and then the following week again, the 5th. So, back to back weeks?
I mean, we could always, depending on how August 15th goes, we could also potentially mix the 29th.
I think that works because if you keep looking through, like with October, and then we like to do three November to do one in December, so it kind of still sets it up to stagger it.
Right.
Enough.
Well, we'll put them in and like Stephanie just said, we can adjust as need, as we need. So, there's one that's a different day though, right?
November 1st, we put on a Wednesday because Halloween fell on Tuesday.
And when's election day?
I believe it's the 8th through 7th.
And we're, that would be the, we'd meet on Wednesday, the 1st, Tuesday, the 14th, and then Tuesday, the 28th.
November 1. November 14th. Hold on, hold on. And December 12th, that's nice, just once, fairly early. You can always add if we need, hopefully we won't. January 9th. Oh, it's nice also to not have it right after then from school.
I think we moved that last week or a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. Alright, any, does it look pretty good for everywhere else for everyone?
And again, we try to avoid the vacation weeks.
Yep.
I think that was a conflict a couple of years ago, so.
Yeah, we were, it was also, we were trying to let people have the, have the break. 12th, March 26th. Of course, Eunice Stone is blowing up with all of these calendar invites as she's sitting at her banquet.
She's not doing anything. And if you don't want to put them in your calendars now, Jackie will send out an invite by the end of the week.
I like to put them all in so that I have them. I like the school usage calendar. So, we'll, we did it like we did this year, the, we have the two June dates because May 21st, I think, my term expires. Jill's two, I think. So, I don't know when elections are for those. I'm putting mine in. I'm assuming I'll be back.
And we did say we're starting at 6:30 again?
Yep. Okay, so we don't need to vote on that because it's just...
It's good to vote.
Yep. Say vote next to it, so we'll just make a note of that.
Oh, we might, we can. Let's go ahead and vote. Um, can I have a motion to approve?
Do you want me to read them?
Sure.
July twenty-third, August fifteenth and twenty-ninth, September fifth and nineteenth, October third and seventeenth, November first, fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
Mm-hmm.
The first one.
Was July thirty-first.
July, thirty-first.
July twenty-third is a Sunday.
I mean, you can come if you'd like.
I say July twenty-third.
Yeah.
July thirty-first, August fifteenth and twenty-ninth, September fifth and nineteenth, October third and seventeenth, November first is a Wednesday, the fourteenth and twenty-eighth, December twelfth, January ninth and twenty-third, February thirteenth and twenty-seventh, March twelfth and twenty-sixth, April ninth and twenty-third, May seventh and twenty-first, June fourth and eighteenth.
Can I have a second?
Second.
So moved.
Well, she started to say you make a motion. He just read the date.
Yeah. Oh, so that was your motion?
Yeah. Okay. I, I, I'm out. All those in favor?
Aye.
I thought I heard you say that. That's why he said you want me to read them and I said, yeah.
I was thinking it.
Okay.
We're all in the same wavelength.
All right, awesome. Well, someone wants to come back at us.
They know the dates to find us.
Not that Sunday. All right, superintendent's report.
Hey, um, just want to remind people that the class of twenty-twenty-three will graduate this Saturday, June tenth. Um, this year's ceremony will once again be back in the gymnasium at junior, senior high school, at the junior, senior high school. We also have a sixth gr- sixth-grade step-up ceremony that's scheduled for this Thursday, June eighth for our sixth graders who will be headed to, um, the junior, senior high school next year. Keep an eye on your school's newsletters for any schedule changes or alterations to the schedule over the last week and a half. Uh, but Friday, June sixteenth is the last day of school for students and staff. Um, it is a half-day, so junior, senior high school will be dismissed at eleven and East Meadow will be dismissed at eleven forty. And finally, I just want to note that, um, earlier this evening, the draft strategic plan went out to our school community. So that had started with, um, the district leadership team, was shared with school committee for feedback, was shared with staff, um, a couple of weeks ago, went to both school councils and then to our full community, school community, um, today for feedback. So if people fill out that Google form, uh, the leadership team will be looking at over the summer, making adjustments and, um, hope to bring forward to the school committee a final document in August to begin implementation, um, with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And that's all I have.
Any questions or comments? All right, finance and operations.
Uh, first thing, tomorrow we have, uh, scheduled the visits for, um, our kitchen project for vendors to come in, examine the space, so they'll prepare their proposals. Um, I've received, um, eight requests for additional information, um, based on the posting. Uh, so, um, John Sullivan is coordinating, uh, the visit. So I know of at least one vendor, so hopefully we'll have a few more that, uh, show up. So that's where I am with that. Um, the other thing that I put in your folder was, uh, two pages related to the information the committee requested on the school lunch revolving account. Um, so the first page is our monthly deposits, um, from reimbursements from the state. And, uh, May's claim hasn't been filed yet. We just finished out the month. Um, and you can see there the expenses to Chart Wells. Those are our invoice, monthly invoices for Chart Wells. And then I listed a couple of other expenses that have come into school revolving. Um, I'm sorry that it's sideways. I wanted to find a way to upload it in a regular format, but it was fighting me. Um, so a couple of the pieces of equipment. There's a warming oven that they purchased for the high school, the junior, senior high school, um, because the kitchen is out of, is unusable, uh, so to help with the lunch service. An ice machine as well, uh, for the, that'll be able to be used at both buildings, um, but it's gonna be at the junior, senior high school. Uh, we're able to use that to primarily use for lunch and preparation, um, but it will also help support the athletic department, so for ice packs, uh, things like that, that we'll be able to use because we've been without an ice machine for a year. So, and I know personally, the chemical packs are terrible. Uh, these are much more effective, uh, for the students to have actual ice packs. So that was a little way to work and support a couple of different causes. So that leaves us at currently, uh, with an anticipated balance of three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in school lunch revolving, um, so... And then the other sheet that goes along, that's our monthly tracking, so number of meals, uh, that are served, both breakfast and lunch, um, and again, along with the invoices, uh, from Chart Wells and the reimbursement from the state.
Excellent. That's nice to see that still in the green.
And we should mention, and I think it was mentioned about a year ago this time, that Jesse, the state, could ask some questions about. Typically, we shouldn't be holding a balance of that amount in that account. Um, but we have also earmarked two hundred thousand dollars of that for the kitchen project. We communicated that last year. Um, now that there's some movement on that forward, our hope is that should they question us again, we'll let them know where we are with the process. So, um, they were agreeable to it last year. I don't foresee a problem, but, um, typically, we're not holding that much in that revolving account.
Okay.
Those are my two major updates.
Well, I'm gonna ask it because it's been like two meetings. Cameras? Are we back? Are we fully, fully backed up with the lightning strike cameras?
So there was, uh, repairs done at this building. I believe there's one...
There's, yeah, just, we had some repairs done again at this building. Um, we, we have one camera, um, that is still down in this building, but all the others are working.
Is that still from the lightning strike?
Um, I don't, I, I'm suspecting it is because it's one of the cameras that was removed, that was sent out. So Mr. Sullivan and I were talking, John Sullivan, um, and I were talking earlier today. And that was one, the initial part of lightning strike, there was a different vendor involved, not the vendor we're using now. So he's reaching out to that vendor, um, on where that camera is at current time. But that's where the, other, other than that one camera, um, they are up and running. There are some cameras that they are, that when they were out here recently, they recommended we consider replacing them, even though that they're working because, um, there's indications that they could fail at some point. Um, so, um, I just received a quote for that and I gave that to Mr. Dorman, um, earlier for consideration. So like I told you at the last meeting, the whole, the camera thing is a constant, it's a constant thing. One minute, everything looks great, and then two weeks later, we're chasing down, uh, a few that aren't working. So it's a, it's a constant work in progress. Either it's a software issue, which I, um, get involved in, or it's a hardware issue, like the actual device bound down the roof, which is the maintenance, uh, director. The stuff I just talked about with the minisco was, um, you know, the actual, um, camera bound down the roof for the building.
Thank you.
So that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay. Still in a much better place than we were a year ago this time we've had.
All right, because it's, it'll be two years in July.
It will.
Awesome. Um, and next, my only other one, because we haven't talked about it, is the chargers. And the parking lot?
I heard no movement or heard anything regarding the charger. I will try to look into that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, next, CES.
So we met on the thirty-first of May. Um, we'll meet again this month, um, this, the last Wednesday of the month. Um, so in the last meeting, we had a FY twenty-three budget update that we discussed. Uh, there was an FY twenty-four budget update presentation. Um, and then in terms of some programs and services, it was discussed and, um, talked about in terms of member fees, program fees, increases, things like that. And, um, one of the things that I noted was the after-school program for Gramby was, the fees were staying the same, um, for the upcoming school year. Um, and then there was just some talk about, um, that board continuing to do some advocacy just around, um, more legislation, kind of coming out with charter schools and potentially lifting kind of the cap on what that looks like. And so being vocal about what that would mean if there were, you know, more schools added and different things like that, which, you know, that's nice if there's options for students, but at the same time, what does that do with funding and budgets and, you know, smaller school districts and things like that?
Do, do they talk about how the charter school reimbursement is? Is that anything that they have any...
They don't have any say.
Right. I just didn't know if they had any people, like, in their, you know, help with legislators or anything that they could help try to get that.
So they talked about the fact that MASC had tried to take on that role in terms of advocacy, um, with school committees for District Five, but felt like that the, the board at CES is also a pretty representative group of, I think it's like thirty-seven districts and, you know, from across, um, Hampshire and Hamden Counties. And that that, they already had a voice at the table, considering they have really large contracts with, you know, Department of Youth Services and, um, students in, um, getting special education services in institutional settings. So with that, it lent itself to potentially using that voice to kind of push some of these other pieces too.
And I just shared the email that Kathy Levesque sent out this morning in regards to this about, um, the upcoming legislative hearing. And it talks a little bit about, um, the impact of charter. I think that's the point that they're trying to get across, the impact that charters are having on public schools. Um, again, to reiterate, we're projecting twenty-three students at the cost of about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for charter out.
Oy vey.
And so I did add, um, I know in our folder, I did add, um, from January through now, went back and added the executive directors' reports. I added kind of Gramby's. There's a spreadsheet for Hamden and Hampshire County, so I added Hampshire County, which, obviously, is a Gramby, um, in terms of services that are taken advantage of and what that looks like currently. Um, so all that was added into the shared folder.
Awesome. Any other questions for Jill? For CES? Okay, um, anything for our next meeting, which is, um, July? Nope.
June twentieth?
Twenty-fifth. I'm just skipping right ahead for you.
Not so fast.
Anything, um, besides standard stuff? Okay, um... Hearing none, uh, will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Part A Three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Would you mind doing a roll call please?
Mr. Durham?
Yes, I agree.
Ms. Pelletier?
Aye.
Ms. Perrin?
Aye.
Ms. Bargos?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.